All right, sorry about we're running a little behind. Before we begin this evening, I would like to remind everyone to please silence your cellphones. Council meetings are live streamed on the city's YouTube channel. And now I'll call the July 15, 2025 regular council meeting to order. All councilors are present. Counselor Pollock is joining us via video. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is standing as one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please read the consent minute approval titles.
Approving the minutes of June 24, 2025, special county council meeting, June 24, 2025, executive meeting, July 1, 2025, council meeting, and July 1, 2025, executive session meeting.
Thank you. The Chair of Intertain a Motion to Approve the Consent Minute Action Items just read.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Bond, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Any abstentions? Abstentions? Counselor Pollock, how do you vote?
Aye.
Do you want to have a TV? She should just be voice. Okay.
Do you have?
We just don't have the voting screen on either. Okay, just move on. Please cast your vote. Yeah, but we'll have to do that vocally.
They're behind you.
Oh, it is. Did not see that. Sorry. Gotcha. Thank you so much. Please record the vote.
With all councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
Sorry, folks, we have usually TVs on here where we can watch that as well, so. Chair to entertain a motion to approve by minute action the July 15, 2025 bills and claims as audited by City Manager Napier.
So moved.
Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Counselor Haskins. Any abstentions? Yes.
Counselor Sweeney.
Go ahead.
I think you are abstaining from the next item, which is the conflict claim. This is the general bills and claims.
It'll be on the next one, Counselor. No, no, you're good. Any other abstentions? Okay, please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
Counselor Pollock, can you hear me at all?
I can hear you, but I don't think you can hear me.
Do we have her on? Just keep going. Chair to entertain a motion to approve by minute action the July 15, 2025 conflict claim as audited by City Manager Napier.
So moved.
Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Counselor Haskins. Any abstentions?
I'd like to abstain.
I'd like to abstain.
Thank you. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With Vice Mayor McIntosh and Counselor Sweeney abstaining and all other councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Tonight, we'd like to welcome Khan Trumbull and Richard Young on behalf of the Fort Casper Museum and other members and friends of the museum to the meeting tonight to discuss the 160th anniversary of Fort Casper. If you would please come forward to the lectern, introduce yourselves and have a few words to say would be great. Eric.
Yeah. Good, everybody. Mayor Pacheco, councilors. I stand before you not just as a representative of our city's rec division, but someone who's had the privilege to get to know the people behind one of our community's most treasured assets. As we recognize the 160th anniversary of the Battle Pratt Bridge and the Battle of Red Buttes, we're not just remembering the events of July 26, 1865. We're honoring the sacrifice of Lieutenant Casper Collins and his fellow soldiers. Just a little insight, though. Over the last two years, I've had the opportunity to work closely with the incredible staff and volunteers at Fort Casper. I've seen hours of dedication that go into preserving our local history, not just through museum exhibits, but through immersive, hands-on educational experiences, candlelight Christmas, ghost tours, obviously Casper College Heritage Day that's going to be coming up, and then countless other events and school tours and just hundreds of people from out of state coming to visit our museum. And I've even had the good fortune to participate as a reenactor myself and wearing heavy cotton in the summer, even in the winter, is pretty uncomfortable. And I've got to learn hands-on with that. But I can tell you, every single time I walk into the, into Fort Casper, I've learned something new. And it's humbling and it deepens my appreciation, not only for the stories being told, but for the people who tell them with passion, accuracy, and heart. So Fort Casper is more than just a historical site. It's a cornerstone of our identity as a city. And it's where we remember, where we teach, and where we celebrate the enduring spirit of those who came before us. And we so appreciate you being willing to do a proclamation today.
Absolutely. Could you introduce everybody real quick?
Yes, absolutely. We've got Rick Young, our museum supervisor. Michelle Baugh, she is our curation coordinator. We've got Sean Moore. He is a part of our Historic Preservation Commission.
I never told.
Oh, sorry.
I'm Becky Steensland. And since this was representing historical presence in Casper, I'm on the board of the Veterans Museum. Pat has been very supportive of us, the Historical Society, the Bellegarde Historical Society. I didn't know we were in a fight with the state, but I guess we are, unfortunately, and DAR. Thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful. Well, if you guys would come and join me up back here, up top here, I'll read the proclamation. Thank you, everyone, for coming up from the Fort Casper Museum. It's certainly an asset to our community, something that we have treasured for many, many years. I know I went there many times as a kid, not 160 years ago, but when I was a kid. Just 20 years ago. Okay. Come on, people. All right, here we go. Third grade, exactly. Now is the time we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. This portion of the meeting is dedicated to the public to allow them time to discuss matters and public interest to voice their concerns. Please state your name. We do ask following. Please state your name, direct all questions and comments to the mayor. No personal senities or threats will be tolerated. Council will not respond to any personnel matters. These will be referred to our city manager. Counselors may ask clarifying questions, but if they choose to respond, this will be done during the scheduled council response time following communications from persons present. Presentations are limited to five minutes, and no time extensions will be allowed. Please note that public hearings and ordinances both have their own separate comment periods. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Ross Riffman. Just one item I have on the agenda tonight under Consent Resolutions 10A4, Authorization to Termination of a Facility Rental Agreement between the city and Blage Edge Ventures, also known as Warbirds. So I read the memo on that and what I discovered is the fact that this organization is two months in arrears. It's $10,000 that's owed to the city and it's been sent to collections. So my only thought on that is I hope that they do pay because $10,000 of rental is really needed and that hopefully it won't have to be eliminated as a charge that this organization owes the city.
Any clarifying questions for Mr. Riffman?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have some questions for Ross.
Oh, yes.
Based on some emails that you send us. Just first want to thank you for continuing to be an engaged citizen of Casper. You continue to be very vocal about our governance. So in order to better understand your position, I was hoping you could clarify a few things for us. Where did you study law?
I'm not a lawyer.
So you don't have a JD. Okay. How about your master's degree? You studied public administration, governmental accounting?
I was an auditor for seven years.
What's that?
I was an auditor for seven years with the state of Pennsylvania.
State auditor? So you have a degree in accounting?
I do not. I have a degree in government. I have a degree in political science in the American University School of Government, Public Administration.
Okay. All righty. Have you ever served on for, as a public administrator or manager for any city?
I have not.
Okay. Mayor?
Nope.
Mayor, city councilman?
Nope.
Okay. Any qualifications or experience you have that I haven't thought of?
I've been in business for 50 years.
Okay.
As an insurance, licensed insurance agent.
Insurance agent, okay. I've also been a licensed insurance agent for the last 30 years, so. I'm asking about your qualifications in all sincerity because from where I'm sitting, I see a governing body consisting of 20-plus individuals who not only care deeply about the people they represent, but who collectively hold advanced degrees in many of the different subjects that I talked about. And we have over 100 years of combined experience in public service as well as serving in those. So on my short time here on the council, I witnessed firsthand the brilliance of these individuals as they carefully consider all sides of the decision in order to make the decision that will best serve all the constituents they represent. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that. So thank you. No more questions.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Riffman. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any others who wish to address? Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Pacheco, my name is Greg Dixon. I currently sit as chair for the Casper Downtown Development Authority. And it's my pleasure, I simply want to introduce our new executive director, and I'm going to let her do that herself. We're very thrilled, myself as a board member and the rest of the board. So Melissa.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you. Mayor, my name is Melissa Huggett. I am the executive director of the Casper Downtown Development Authority as Mr. Dixon mentioned. I'm really thrilled to be in this role. I'm a Casper native. I've seen the great strides that have been made in downtown. I know several of the council members personally and just recently met. So I look forward to continuing the work of everyone that's come before us, before me, and I look forward to working with Liz Becker and her team. So, thank you.
Appreciate that. Any questions? Yeah, go ahead. Counselor Sweeney.
Thank you, Mayor. So thanks for coming tonight. And Greg, all of your time spent on other issues and your role with Hilltop National Bank is appreciated. I just wondered if either one of you wanted to make any comment about the resolution that we'll be approving for the 16 mills to support the DDA?
I can make one. This is, you know, this is an every-four-year thing. And this is, as chair or even board member, this is my first election for the mill levy. So we will make a difference as a board, Melissa as an executive director. So we just hope, I think, we can benefit all of the businesses and property owners in the downtown districts. So just ask for that support, and we'll certainly do our best to make a difference, once anything.
I appreciate you considering it, and I appreciate the consent and approval of the resolution.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks. Pat broke the ice. And I always look for opportunities to speak. And I don't believe we've had either of you up here before. So no questions, but I did just want to take a point because I think I've served as liaison to the DDA board my entire service on council. So a few years now at this point. I'm excited to have Melissa on as her new executive director. She came highly regarded. And unfortunately, I've not made a board meeting yet. The Chamber of Commerce likes to plan their luncheons right over the top of our board meetings. So I've missed the past two, but I'm going to make the next one, I promise. And I just really want to thank Greg. Greg has been serving as our chair for, did you just? Accepted a second one? So I really appreciate it, especially since we've, you know, made a change in leadership at the organization. Greg does an amazing job as a board chair. He keeps us on the agenda. He works those extra hours. And so I just wish every board chair, you know, every board had a Greg because you've just been instrumental to that board and just really made sure we kept our momentum going, that we stayed on time, which I need. I know my colleagues know I need some tight reins to stay on the agenda. So just really appreciate it. You both do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to Melissa.
Good evening.
Evening, Mr. Mayor. Evening, council members. My name is Nick McNamee. This is Bill DeGrave. And we're up here in support, obviously, of the pre-meeting items that were discussed around the Hogedon Basin lift prices, the lift ticket prices, and also in particular, the facility fee. I wanted to speak directly to the fact of the facility fee, introduce the idea that a group of volunteer members of a committee has come. We call it the Hogedon Lift Task Force, trying to get a lift up there, realize the situation that occurred with the one cent vote that happened. And with that, we just want to, I wanted to express tonight support for, I think, a creative, yet still conservative solution that has been presented by city staff here for the facility fee to come from those users. And it presents us as a committee for the ability to seek loans, seek grants, and also advocate strongly for donors who are going to be asking the natural question of what are the users? What are the, what is the city doing to help in continuing to steward this asset, which I think is very important? So with that said, I'll keep this very brief, but I also want to just say in helping create some form of mechanism for that lift, it's important, it helps our youth in our community. We have a few board members from the Casper Mountain Racers Club community that are here tonight in support of this. It helps our Alpine ski programs for both Natchitochmi County High School and Kelly Walsh High School, which it's important to keep those active because that's, losing those would be a severe detriment to the entire statewide ski program for our high school activities association. And lastly, it provides an enormous amount of livability. It provides livability for our community to continue to steward the Hogedon asset and the lift that's integral and very important for that. It's an economic development opportunity. It helps us to recruit young professionals and companies into our community, and it makes Casper a better place to live during the long winter months. So I just wanted to point that out. Bill, do you have anything to comment there?
The last point was the most important. It makes it a better place to live in those long winter months. Bill DeGrave, I'm here today as two things, Director of Casper Mountain Ski Patrol and also Chairman of the Lift Casper Task Force. I think Nick really well summarized the positions that we would present to you. It's important that to get this chairlift in place, we show a public and a private relationship getting there. Apologize that I didn't make the work session. I was working on a sprinkler that decided to become the neighborhood fountain. Therefore, I'm a little bit late. But Nick, thanks for your great words. Just like to show our support.
Any questions that, yeah, go ahead. Counselor Sweeney.
So I would, thanks for coming. And have you seen the proposed rate schedule as far as the increases proposed?
I personally have seen them. I'm not sure if the committee has seen them. No, I only know that there's a proposed 10% facility fee on top of the rate structure. That's specifically what I'm supporting.
So I would just ask if, you know, after that comes out in this week's packet on Friday, that's released to the public at the same time, that you kind of look at that and see if you have any recommendations for or against? I know, I would appreciate it.
Perfect. Happy to take a look and consider that, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Wait, Bill?
Hold on a second. You've got one more. Counselor Jensen.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but when, on Friday, when that packet does come out, can you send me an email on your views to maybe a preseason? What you feel about the preseason tickets? If those are worth it, not worth it, you know, kind of thing? Just from perspective on the hill and your longevity that you've been over at Hogedon?
Sure.
Be valuable.
Happy to do so.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Joe Nicholas. I'm here both as a user of Hogedon and also as a board member with Casper Mountain Racers. My wife and our three children are active users of that facility. And I think there are sort of two things that were discussed earlier this morning. One is just an increase of the fee structure. And while I would love for all of my neighbors to continue to subsidize my skiing, I understand that probably in the last two years, the cost to run the facility, just like everything else in our society, have gone up. So unfortunately, there's probably going to have to be a rate increase of some sort. And I think that's just the cost of doing business. I think the comments on comparing us with Snow King, they're difficult. I think you would have to understand whether Snow King has any subsidies from the city of Jackson. And I mean, I think it's more difficult than that. And I think you also have to think, in the city of Casper, we're not going to go to Snow King more than likely, right? So I mean, I think you ultimately have a budget. The council has to decide how much they're willing to subsidize the budget, and then you have to solve for the, what needs to be increased. I think to the, on the preseason passes, my recollection is that there's not a preseason sale on the family passes, but there are on the individual passes. Certainly, I understand the viewpoint that there should be a discount if you want to pay early for something, and that some folks, the payment plan, they're kind of two separate topics there. I think your questions were all very good questions, and I'm sure you all come to the proper assessment on the rate fees. More importantly, I'm here to talk about the user fees for the capital construction, the 10%. And I think one of the things that's important for folks that may not use Hogedon or not be, may not be up at Hogedon, I think from my perspective, one, as is explained in this document that you all looked at today, if you have an issue with the ski lift in the middle of the season, it's going to be a major issue. And it's probably not going to be something that you're able to solve shortly. But I think beyond that, from my perspective, if you go up on the weekends, there's a lot of young children up on those lifts riding together. You know, you've got a lot of six- and seven-year-olds, five-year-olds riding the lift. And while I know Ryan has assured me he can get everybody off the lift in 20 to 25 minutes, 25 minutes on a windy Casper day is a long time for some of those children to be up there. So from my perspective, I really view it as a safety issue. And back to the folks that are using the facility should have some skin in the game. And I think it certainly makes it easier when Bill and Nick are out raising funds from the private sector. So I'm supportive of both of these.
Any questions for Joe? Thanks for coming up, Joe.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody else who wishes to speak to Counselor? Joe, if you want to stick around, just in case council has any comments they want to make, there's a period for that, too. Nick, if you want to stick around just for a couple of minutes, just to see. And if nobody does, you guys can head out of here, so. With that being said, does any of the councilors want to respond to any of the matters that were brought up to the council? Yeah. Counselor Bond.
No, just, the only comment I have is just to say welcome to Melissa. And I did get the opportunity to meet her at the Homless Coalition, I think, and we got to visit there. So just welcome to Casper. Welcome back home, I guess, back home. But, and we're looking forward to working with you, so. And I think that was all. Thank you.
Counselor Gamroth.
Thank you, Mayor. Only thing I would like to add is it's not super often that we get folks coming to speak in support of things. You know, usually folks coming in, they're frustrated with things, which I think they absolutely should do because we need to address those as well. But it's a lot easier to show up when you're frustrated or, you know, you know, we just see so few people show up in support of things. So I just really appreciate everyone being here, giving us their feedback. It was great feedback from people that have a lot of expertise and knowledge about what we're talking about, certainly more than me, somebody who hasn't been up to the slopes for a couple of years. So just really appreciate you all showing up and being generous with your time. Thank you.
Counselor Sweeney.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, too, really appreciate those comments. And Joe, you gave a different perspective. I really appreciate that. And kind of walked me off the cliff a little bit, so, from the pre-meeting. But appreciate that. And it is a quality of life issue and very important when we're trying to recruit. Just as David Street Station and our DDA is important in Hogedon when we're trying to recruit doctors, attorneys, any professionals or citizens for that matter, whether they work for Rocky Mountain Power or a bank, any type of employee. I think all of those things add to that. I just want to make sure we keep it a I just want to make sure we keep it affordable. But you're correct, it's going to be an absolute disaster if that lift goes down. And then what do we do? And do we refund the season tickets? I didn't even bring that up because I don't want to think about it. So, but appreciate your time, and Bill, you've given thousands of hours to the ski patrol, so appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Councilor Jensen?
Yeah, I just want to say, mainly just echoing what Councilor Sweeney and Gamroth have said, but thank you, Melissa, and Greg too, for being here, and welcome to your new role at the DDA, and I'm excited for you, and all the great things to come. It's really energized the city as far as I can, what I've been hearing, and how excited they are to have you in that role. So thank you for accepting it, we're looking forward to what comes ahead. As for everyone who spoke on behalf of Hogodon, I am, I'm just very grateful, and just to let you know that your voices have been heard, and we do, and those is what we, what you guys have to say and what you see is what matters to us, and we want to make sure that we're making the right decisions for you. So when you come and you actually give us your insights, it's very valuable. So I want to say thank you, and it goes a long way.
Anybody else? Welcome to the DDA. We appreciate the work you're going to be doing, it's a great organization, and we appreciate the work that you guys have planned downtown and the work that you have. Ski lift and the people that came up here to talk about that, in the pre-meeting, I mentioned that this is the cost of what, I mean, Joe, you said that, it's absolutely the cost of living is skyrocketing, and everything costs more. And so that's going to be the reality, I think, we have to face in all levels, we know that from this standpoint, from the city, that we have to either figure out ways to make cuts or figure out ways to invest in what we need to do for our amenities. I was disappointed that the ski lift didn't pass the six cent, I thought that was going to be a really, was really, really excited for that one, had that pass, I think that would have been a big benefit for the community in that. But we'll continue to work towards that, but I think you guys made your point today, and we appreciate it, since we're not up on those slopes a whole lot, so, at least I'm not anyway, so, thank you for your time, guys, appreciate it. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of an ordinance approving a zone change in the Capitol Hill addition subdivision. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Thank you, Mayor, I do. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Liz Becker to Jay Carter Napier, dated July 11th, 2025. Exhibit number two, affidavit of publication from the Casper Star Tribune, dated July 1st, 2025.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
I do, Your Honor, thank you very much. This is a request for a zone change with respect to a private business entity who would like to expand their footprint in the form of occupying a space that is currently occupied by a building that they want to remove and expand their business into. In order to facilitate that, however, this zone change would be necessary in order to accommodate the services that this business, a business which has been on Second Street for a long, long time, as many of you know, to be consistent with the zoning that would allow for said services and work. And that is to have it be C4 Highway Business District versus a C2 General Business, which it is currently zoned as. As you can see in your memo, the proposal is not inconsistent with what is in place with regard to surrounding zoning of this particular segment of our business community. And part of the reason, I'm sure, that this has been supported until now. And so with that, Your Honor, I would, in my comments.
Great, thank you so much. Council now listen to public comments, public hearing comments are limited to five minutes, no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of this ordinance to please approach the lectern. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor? Yeah, come on up, sir. Good evening.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. We purchased that property. I don't know. Let me do one more. Five.
Wonderful. Any questions for Terry? Thank you so much, appreciate it. Anybody else wish to speak in favor? At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to this ordinance to please approach the lectern. Anybody who wish to speak in opposition? There being no others to speak for or against the ordinance, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance approving a zone change for Lot 1 and Strip Adjacent Block 40 of the Capitol Hill Addition subdivision in the city of Casper, Wyoming.
Thank you. The Chair of Entertainer motion to approve on first reading the ordinance just read. Moved by Councilor Sweeney, seconded by Councilor Haskins. Discussion? Anybody have any comments? Discussion? Any amendments? Please cast your vote. Councilor Pollock, how do you vote?
Aye.
Oh, she said aye, okay, thank you. Please record the vote.
With all councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
Please read the ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a vacation final plat subdivision agreement and zone change for the Valley West Park Addition subdivision.
Thank you. The Chair of Entertainer motion to approve on second reading the ordinance just read. Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilor Haskins, I think she got in there first, sorry, Councilor Bond. Council now listen to public comments. Anybody wish to speak to this? Okay, any discussion from the council? Yep, Councilor Gamroth?
Thank you, Mayor. I would really, I see Pat's not here, he joined us for the first reading, but I guess I, I've only heard from one neighbor in the area, had some concerns, but my guess is there's other folks that have thoughts, and so one of the things I would like to see from Pat or the development firm for the area is, we haven't even seen anything like a site plan or anything, you know, the first reading, there was just very little to go off of, other than just kind of just general ideas of what was going to be done. And so I'm fine voting in favor tonight, but I would really like to see, I don't know if we can facilitate maybe a conversation with Pat at our next work session, or maybe squeeze him into the pre-meeting before the third reading, but I would really love to get Pat in front of us again and hope that we can have a site plan or just some other, you know, I had some questions last time, and it sounds like there was just a lot of details that hadn't been worked out yet, and so for me to feel real comfortable about this, I would just like to see, have a clearer picture of what that development's going to look like, so. I know that's kind of not super precise direction, but I would love to see Pat again before we pass the third reading, it's kind of the crux of it.
Mr. City Manager, can you take a look and see if we can squeeze him in somewhere?
Or at least if he has materials we could include in the packet to inform, I just, I really have nothing to go off of, other than just a general idea of what he wants to do with the area, so.
Mr. Mayor, we can certainly go in whatever direction council would like to see, but with regard to what Council Gamroth just suggested, we certainly can get as much material that we can get our hands on into the next packet in preparation for the third reading, absolutely.
Does council have a preference? Is paperwork into a packet, okay?
Can I ask one more clear question? So the third reading of this vacation final replat, after the third reading, he's got to go ahead to Bill, right? Okay, so this is kind of the last opportunity to, yeah, okay.
The third reading would be, yeah.
Right, right.
So it sounds like the direction would be, if we can get some documents, something for the council to look over?
We will, and we'll do what we can to have Pat at the third reading as well, in the event that there are questions.
Oh, good, that'd be great.
You bet.
Okay, cool. Any other discussion? Any amendments? Please cast your vote. Councilor Pollock, how do you vote?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
Please read the ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance amending Section 9.44.020 Weapons of the Casper Municipal Code.
Thank you. The Chair of Entertainer motion to approve on second reading the ordinance just read. Moved by Council Gamroth, seconded by the Vice Mayor. This time, council will listen to any public comments. Anybody wish to speak to the second reading? Okay, any discussion from the council? Councilor Sweeney?
Mayor, so I'm going to be a no again tonight on second reading only due to principle and my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, any amendments? Please cast your vote. Councilor Pollock, how do you vote?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With Councilor Sweeney voting nay, and all other councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
Please read the ordinance on third reading by title only.
Amending Casper Municipal Code, Section 12.24.030 Sidewalk Obstructions Prohibited.
Thank you. The Chair of Entertainer motion to approve and adopt on third reading the ordinance just read. Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilor Haskins. At this time, council will listen to public comments. Anybody wish to speak to this third and final reading? Good evening.
I'm, I have a couple of questions. By being a customer, I, so I wanted a question.
Carter, do you want me to have all the questions, and then have, maybe you look back, or do you want to do question by question for this comment?
Oh, Your Honor, I think during the discussion portion, we can certainly address whatever questions council would like to address.
Great, so what we'll do is, I'll have you out, we will answer your questions, but we'll wait to the discussion period to this, so all your questions that you'll have, we'll try to answer those, okay?
Awesome, thank you.
That's your question?
That's one of them, and then another one that I've heard is, would there be a way that if we are in charge of moving our own snow and stuff, if we could possibly have like snow removal drop-off sites?
Okay. If I get it wrong, I'm scribbling it down, if I get it wrong, I'm going to look to our city manager in the panic, make sure he's got it down, so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll get you some answers, hopefully.
All right.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, discussion. Carter? So I think the first question was, private plowing on those side roads, clothes, that kind of stuff, is that something, how would the city look at that? Is there things that we can do?
Mr. Mayor, the ordinance applies to all sidewalks, to start with, and the larger, broader question about, you know, private plowing and those kinds of things, the fact is, the city does have a very limited amount of agreements with neighborhoods wherein private plowing takes place. That plowing takes place with respect to real specific guidelines and directions so that we can minimize damage to property and, of course, the public. It is also a part of the agreement, in the, again, in the really limited amount of agreements that we have in this regard, that snow deposit areas would be the responsibility of the plowing entity, whether that be the HOA or a particular member of that community, that part of that neighborhood, wherein they have a place to push snow into an area that would not prohibit or block or obstruct travel in the area being maintained privately. So that does exist, the conditions have to be pretty, you know, good in order for something like this to occur, and, but we can certainly entertain conversations.
Did you get all that?
I did.
Good, okay. If you need any clarifications, just give us a call at the city manager's office. Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Any other discussion? Yep?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you also for speaking, I know we got introduced to you at the beginning, I don't remember the name though, what was your name, sir?
Sean Moore.
Sean, thank you, Sean. I also wanted to make sure you're aware, I don't know if my colleagues would necessarily agree with me or city staff either, but in my opinion, this adjustment to the existing ordinance, you know, this is one of those ordinance that in my opinion is kind of complaint-driven, we don't have the resources at the city to be out there enforcing every single person that doesn't, you know, shovel their sidewalk within a certain amount of time. To me, having these ordinance on the books, give tools to our police department, our code enforcement office, to address the most egregious examples, you know, I can think of, I think it was last year when we talked about the feeding of squirrels and turkeys and stuff, in my opinion, people were blowing that way out of proportion, they thought that we were going to have code enforcement looking over the fence line of every person's backyard, trying to catch them in the act of feeding squirrels, I haven't heard a single example of somebody that, you know, a grandma that feeds a handful of squirrels, if that's happening, it hasn't made its way up to us yet. And so to me, the addition of snow to this existing ordinance, which already includes brokenware, glass, filth, rubbish, refuse, ice, water, oil, mud, garbage, ashes, tin cans, and other like substances, automobiles, trucks, trailers, box, bicycle toy, merchandise, and other things, the addition of snow, in my opinion, is just there as kind of a safety blanket in the case we do have, you know, I'm not even going to throw out hypotheticals right now, but in the case somebody is egregiously taking advantage of the public right away by piling snow up and stuff, we have something on the books to address it, whereas in the past, it was sort of, you know, what we would have to tell neighbors is deal with it, kind of thing. And so I think you asked good questions, but this is one of those, you know, it's generated a lot of public commentary, and in my opinion, you know, it's not anything that's going to significantly, or even minimally change the way that the city conducts its business, other than just putting a few more tools in the toolbox to address those really egregious examples that we have everyone in the kind of neighborhood rallying for some sort of resolution. So if it provides any reassurance to you or the folks that you've been communicating with, thank you.
Thank you, Sean, appreciate it. Yeah, Councilor Sweeney?
So I can't remember exactly how this came about, and was trying to, pardon?
Dennis. She doesn't even remember.
So, so. Oh, it was, it was Councilor Haskins? No, Councilor Jensen doesn't remember it.
So I know I've received some emails from like disabled veterans, old folks like me, they can't really lift the snow up over their fence anymore, and so I appreciate your comments on that. The other one that really was concerning to me is on the main thoroughfares, when you get done shoveling your sidewalk and the plows come by doing their necessary stuff and push everything right back into your driveway. And so that was a concern also, but do we really need this? And I say that because I've gotten more email just recently on this, and now it's third reading, so, but anyway, those are my comments.
Thank you. Thank you. Yep. Oh, sorry. Yes, Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, Mayor, Council. So just by way of history, if you recall, staff did bring this to a work session for discussion about whether we wanted to amend the ordinance. And I think ultimately, we decided no. And up to this point, with snow not specifically mentioned, what code enforcement was having to do is say, well, it's a like substance to water. And so the addition of the word snow is really just to be very, very clear. And as you may recall, code enforcement officer Amber Jividen indicated that the only time that this ever really practically comes up is when you have commercial operations that are moving large amounts of snow into the right of way or obstructing the sidewalk. There's no plans to suddenly start issuing tickets, you know, against the individual citizens or, you know, senior citizens who are addressing it. So really, this is, the ordinance amendment is simply a clean up to make it more explicit. I think what typically happens is when they approach folks that are doing this on a commercial basis in large volume, they say, well, show me in the ordinance where it's prohibited. Now they can clearly say it's prohibited. And 99.9% of the time, the folks say, okay, great, and then they comply. So that is the intent behind it, if that helps to lay any of the fears moving forward.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Gamroth.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one last addition to kind of my spiel earlier. I've heard personally from some folks that they represent that we kind of have a cabal of code enforcement officers out there giving people a hard time. I would like to remind folks that at least as of a week or two ago, I haven't spoken to her since then, but Amber's office, code enforcement, had two employees. So, you know, for 65,000 people, we only got two officers out there working on this stuff. So, you know, pretty lean. That's all I would say. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, go ahead, Counselor Bond.
I guess what I just wanted to emphasize was, I think, was the spirit of the ordinance in terms of, you know, I think Counselor Jensen brought up when we first started talking about this about, you know, for example, kids walking to school, you know, that have to, could, had to veer off the sidewalk because of, because of snow piled and having to walk into the street, you know, situations that become dangerous. Or, but I think the intent, again, the spirit of it is to, that homeowners and, you know, residents do what they can to keep their section of the sidewalk as clear as possible. You know, I heard examples in emails I got about, well, as Counselor Sweeney mentioned, you know, the plow comes along and pushes it right back on the sidewalk. Well, you know, that's not the homeowners or the residents' fault. That's, you know, but again, it's a good faith effort. Hopefully would inspire a good faith effort on the part of residents to keep their sidewalk as clear as possible. So I hope, I hope folks keep that in mind.
Thank you.
It goes into open.
Anybody else? Great, thank you, everyone. Fair enough. Okay, any other discussion? Any amendments? Please cast your vote. Counselor Pollock, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Sweeney, did you vote no on this? You did, okay. Please record the vote.
With Counselor Sweeney voting nay and all other councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Please read the ordinance on third reading by title only.
Amending the Casper Municipal Code, Section 10.12-030 Driver's License Restrictions.
Chair entertained a motion to approve and adopt on third reading the ordinance just read. Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Counselor Haskins. Council will now listen to public comments. Anybody wish to speak on this third reading? Okay, any discussion from the council? Any amendments? Anybody to wait for you? Your aye, okay. Please cast your vote. Counselor Pollock, how do you vote? There's a lot going on up here. My ADHD is going crazy. Council now consider consent resolutions. Please read the consent resolutions by title only. Record the vote, see?
With all councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
Council will now consider consent resolutions. Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
10A1 Authorizing the Execution of a Temporary Use Permit with the Wyoming Department of Transportation for the Tower Hill Tank Stabilization Project. 10A2 Rescinding and Replacing Resolution 25-149 and Authorizing Amendment Number One to the Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Casper, Wyoming and Natrona County Regarding the Joint Distribution of Opioid Settlement Funds. 10A3 Approving Contingent Upon Voter Approval as Provided in Wyoming Statute Section 15-9-217B An Annual Assessment of 16 Mills Against the Assessed Value of Real Property Within the Downtown Development District, Excluding Real Property Used Exclusively for Residential Purposes and Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute and the City Clerk to Attest thereto. 10A4 Authorizing the Termination of a Facility Rental Agreement Between the City of Casper, Wyoming and Blade Edge Ventures LLC. 10A5 Authorizing a Contract for Professional Services with Airate Design Group LLC for Design Services for Fire Station Number One. 10A6 Authorizing Acceptance of a Grant from the Wyoming Governor's Big Game License Coalition. 10A7 Authorizing Amendment Number One to the Memorandum of Understanding Concerning Metro Animal Shelter Services Between the City of Mills, Wyoming and the City of Casper, Wyoming. 10A8 Authorizing Amendment Number One to the Public Safety Advisory Committee Agreement Between the City of Casper, Natrona County, Natrona County Fire Protection District, the City of Mills, the Town of Evansville, and the Town of Midwest. With all councilors voting aye, the motion passes. 11A1 Accepting the High Bid of $536,174 for the City-Owned Property Described as Lot 1 through 4 of the Robertson Road Edition.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. This is pursuant to the requests that were received in the work session a week ago, I believe, wherein there were some that desired further discussion about the possibility of accepting this bid, which indeed did come in below appraised value. As you remember, the appraised value for this property, the subject property, that we commonly refer to as the Trevitt Lane Property, at $575,000, we received one bid in the amount of $536,174. And so the question before the council tonight is whether or not we can proceed in accepting of this bid and moving forward.
Thank you. Discussion from the council. Yep, Counselor Gamroth.
Thank you, Mayor. Carter, thanks for the context. I plan on voting no, not because I'm opposed to the project in general. This is the second time it's been put out forbidden. This is the sole bid we've received both times. So, you know, clear there isn't too much demand for the area. However, I am concerned about the addition of Wyoming Classical Academy further north on Robertson Road, what that might do to traffic, and the fact that we won't have our Robertson Road corridor study. We don't have it back yet. And so for me, the timing, in addition to it being below the appraised value, doesn't line up. And so just wanted to reiterate those points that I have, not necessarily opposed to the development in general. I just don't think now is the right time to accept this bid. And I do apologize for agreeing to put it out for publishing in the first place. That was my mistake. Thank you.
Other discussion? Counselor Haskins.
Not on the same page as Kyle entirely. However, I didn't like that we couldn't do a counter bid. And with the rezoning and the fact that the property was valued significantly less than our original appraisal, I felt like we gave an inch and we didn't get an inch back. I don't like the amount that they're offering us and I'd like to reject the bid. So I will also be voting no.
Any others? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With Counselor Gamroth and Haskins voting nay and all other councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Please read the non-consent minute action title.
11A2 Accepting the High Bid of $15,000 for City-Owned Property Described as Lot 5A of the Casper Edition.
Chair entertained a motion to approve the non-consent minute action agenda item just read. Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. In similar fashion, council asked that this item also be removed from consent and considered separately with respect to a very similar process wherein we entered a request for bid public process for the corner of West Collins and Locust, a much smaller property, of course. And we received one bid. Council recall that the appraised value was in the neighborhood of $30,000. $30,000 and the bid, of course, that came back was $15,000 by the adjacent property owner, as you see here on your exhibit.
Thank you. Any discussion from the council on this? Okay, please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
At this time, we ask councilors to bring forward any relevant concerns or items of interest. Let's see, where should I start? Counselor Haskins.
I don't have much this week. I had my drug court meeting was rescheduled due to some trainings, I believe. And then we did meet up with the Priority Based Budgeting Group. We started going through all the questionnaires and the data we got from that. And I believe we meet again next week. So I'm sure we'll have the important information and all of our thoughts and process for you guys the following week.
Thank you. Counselor Sweeney.
Thank you, Mayor. So July 5th, we had the Chalk Art and Kickoff Breakfast for Central Wyoming Fair and Rodeo. And the participation was great. The weather was beautiful. And so it was a great event. Obviously, July 8th, Tuesday, was parade day. I think there was close to 170 entries and really, really a great event. Sorry I missed council. I have to participate in mutton busting. I don't get to ride. Thank God for the sheep.
I'd rather go to mutton, I'd rather go to mutton busting than come here too, Pat.
Well, sometimes. So the rest of that week, being on the fair board, we participated with security briefings and the like. And I did want to mention in particular, I see the chief is here. And I know that the sheriff's office was very appreciative of working with the Casper Police Department, both on undercover and outside the gate. And they felt it was a very successful operation jointly. And we're hoping that that'll continue. And I think we got some folks off the street that needed to be at other places. So I'll leave it at that. But thank you, thank you, Chief, for making that happen. And on the 9th, Wednesday, we had the DCBA, Downtown Casper Business Association, leading up to this weekend. It's a very busy weekend across town and up on the mountain. And I'll mention that later with crazy days and lots of stuff. And then joined several of you at the Chamber of Commerce lunch. I thought that was great. And our city manager gave a great presentation in the University of Wyoming. And I missed the AMCO reuse joint powers board meeting, but reviewed the budget and materials. And they did just fine without me. I asked them if they wanted an alternate in my place and they indicated probably not. But we might look at that in the future. So, and then on the 12th was the 4H FFA sale during the fair. I think the total sale was down a little bit, but we were down because we had so many animals the year before in the sale that it lasted until about four or five o'clock in the afternoon and the bidders didn't like that. And so took it down to about 260 animals and still produced about $1.4 million for the kids. Some of the things got a little out of hand, but that's the way it goes. So July 13th, I attended Tim Monroe's Celebration of Life. Senator Brasso made time to come and it was really a unique service. And just, they had some mementos on a table coming in along with a couple of pictures like usual, but there proudly was displayed his badge as being mayor and on the council and several of his Wham! badges from different things that he attended. And so he was very proud of his service. And last night, I went to the Radiant put on in Town Hall, meeting up in Barnown. Lot of participation, yet again, Radiant put it on and the CEO actually came toward it. Unbelievable job trying to answer a lot of questions. So, but, and then want to remind folks that tomorrow is Wild Gives. There's, we've got a tremendous amount of nonprofits. There's a lot of folks doing matches. And in particular, on the 1224 Club, there's some remarkable family donations locally going towards that, that if you give 10 bucks, that turns into basically 30. So, and that's not totally unique, but encourage anybody. and that's not totally unique, but encourage anybody, if they're so inclined, it's tomorrow. Then just want to remind folks, and hopefully Kyle will catch what I didn't
You covered it, man.
Pick up. But on Saturday, you've got crazy days. You've got the Irish Festival over at the NIC, the Outdoor Rec at David Street Station from 11 to 6, Casper Collins Days from 9 to 4. Can't miss that. And then there is a gathering, I think it's, I can't remember if it's at 4 o'clock or 6 o'clock, in recognition of, I think it's 50 years of the Braille Trail up on Casper Mountain from the Lions Club. And another event that Wyoming Caris is putting on at Conwell Park from 2 to 5. So and a lot, and I probably missed something, but I don't know how anybody's going to get to all of it. But I want to get to the Irish Festival.
Looking forward to that. Counselor Gamroth.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I've been slacking this pack this week compared to Pat, man. I hadn't done nothing. I joined you Wednesday, along with a couple others, at the Chamber Economic Update Luncheon. Again, props to our city manager, had a great presentation, along with Dr. Anne Alexander from the University of Wyoming. I think she's an economic, some sort of economic expert. So she had some really interesting data on economic indicators for our county. I don't think we got sent those presentation materials yet, but we do. So if you're interested, you can ask Carter and staff, and he can send it to y'all. You missed hairball on Friday. So you missed hairball. So if you want to dress up and go listen to some 80s classic rock. Yeah, no, I mean, that was a great synopsis of everything going on this weekend. I totally agree that especially during the summer months, there is too much to do. There's just too much to, nobody's got enough time in the day. And so I would just offer that up as a rebuttal to folks. You know, occasionally I'll see people say that Casper is a dying city, or there's nothing to do here. It's such a wild opinion to hear from me, because I often feel like there's too much to do, and I can't get to all the things I want to. So I would encourage folks, the Oil City News events calendar is relatively new. And so I would just push people to look at that. As somebody who used to manage community calendars for social media purposes and stuff, it's the best out there. It's very comprehensive. And so, yeah, if you want to find something to do this weekend, that's a great place to start. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson.
Pat, I feel like you should write for Oil City News's new events calendar newspaper. Got it all. I don't really have anything other than I just want to say thank you to our Casper's finest police for looking out for our youth in the neighborhoods. And at nighttime, when they're disobedient and don't listen to their parents and sneak out, and you have no clue, it's good to know that they are watching the streets for that and give us a phone call. And so we can claim our child, so we know where he is. So I just want to say thank you for keeping the streets safe at wee hours of the night or morning. And appreciate that you guys are looking out for our youth, even when our parents are sleeping and we have no clue. So thank you.
Yeah, there's a story there. Counselor Bond.
Thank you, Mayor. Not much to bring up. Just, I attended the Economic Update Luncheon as well with Counselor Sweeney, and Counselor, or Gamroth was there as well, Counselor Larson as well. But yeah, I would agree, the city manager did a great job, and it was interesting to hear that economic data. And I was curious about kind of drilling down into some of the more specific Natrona County data. That would have been an interesting perspective to hear more of. But all of her comments were very, very interesting indeed about the state economic point of view there. I attended the Youth Mental Health Collective meeting this afternoon with some of the groups. Reported, our main primary goal right now is to work on the development and kind of promotion of third spaces for youth in the community as an answer or a response to ensuring that youth are well taken care of and have healthy outlets and healthy opportunities to spend their leisure time and have the opportunities for the support and interaction, social interaction that they need. I had a couple of constituents now ask me, so I thought I would bring it up, just mention just a question about whether perhaps our city, and I don't know if it would be the Public Engagement Office or that kind of thing, but wondering if a community newsletter, a monthly newsletter, you know, may be available on the website, or that could be pushed out through email would be a possibility. And I think it kind of captures some of what Counselor Gamroth and Sweeney, there's a lot going on in Casper. And the city has no shortage of events as well. So and I think it might, the more I thought about it, I thought that might be a good way to get more engagement from the community by having that pushed out so that folks are aware of what we're doing. And then the last thing was, I've had, there was a couple, there was a little bit of social media buzz about some confusion about water billing. So I don't know if that, I forwarded an email to you, Carter. So just maybe it's an opportunity to kind of maybe get some clarity for some folks about their billing. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Larson.
I don't have much tonight. I attended a regional water board meeting this afternoon. It was pretty uneventful for the most part, just voted on a couple of things. We voted to approve a budget amendment to carry over some capital funds for fiscal year '25 for some projects, just a couple of projects that haven't been completed yet. That totaled around approximately $5 million. And then we also voted to do, or on the approval of approximately $1 million for the Mountain Dew Water Storage Tank and just some structural and paint repair on that. So that was it.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Counselor Pollock, do you have anything you'd like to add? You've been a great proxy for Counselor Pollock. Just wanted to go on the record for that. Thank you. If I ever have to be video, I'm going to have you be my proxy.
Mayor, I forgot to add that I had Counselor Pollock's proxy at AMCO, or at the regional one.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
She was there.
Thanks, Counselor. Appreciate that. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If Pat's calendar didn't have enough for you to do, coming up in August, our National Historic Trails Interpretive Center has some great things going on, especially on August 9th. Eric Johnson will be talking about John Colter's Run for Life. I happened to talk to Eric, and he told me a little bit about the story. And it's, and it's a fascinating story. So if you want to hear a really good history story of a poor guy that was captured by the Indians and had to run naked to try and get away from them, it's, I think it's worth going to. And they have some others. So I'm sure they have their programs online where you can go look at them. But I put that plug in for Eric and his storytelling. He's a pretty good storyteller. Also, the Priority Based Budgeting, we got together and went over the questionnaire from the folks in town that participated. We had over 300 people participate in it. So it was great to see that good participation. Some areas that we had as meeting priority, they felt could be high priority, but overall, our priorities seemed to be well in line with the community. So thank you to everybody who participated. It was good to see their input. One thing I was happy to see was that several commented that they would like more opportunities to serve, whether it be on boards or community service. So stand by, we've got some things in the works on some service opportunities. Also, curbside recycling was something that many commented on that they would like to see. So it was great going over those questionnaires. So and I think that's all we got. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Just a couple items from me as well. Vice Mayor and myself will be at the breakfast for the Council of Governments at Etington's this week for our monthly meeting with the mayors and county commissioners around the community, which would be great. I want to apologize, I had to miss the swearing in last, yesterday. I was out of town camping. But Amanda came in and was able to do the swearing in, so I appreciate that. But I also want to go on to extend my congratulations to Chief Chaney for being appointed the permanent chief for us. On a side note, we're very blessed to have his integrity and who he is, just as an individual. But he has over 30 years of experience, the respect of our department, the respect of the city. If you go on even, you can gauge on Facebook, a lot of comments, which is very, can be very negative. It was overwhelming support that we saw on Facebook. Just happy for him and happy for the community. So congratulations, Chief. We're very lucky to have you. So. I also attended the Chamber Lunch, where Carter gave an amazing presentation. We were on the edge of our seats. No, it was fantastic. And then Anne Alexander presented. She's a senior lecturer and assistant dean for the College of Business and Economics. She has great insight within that to talk about the economy, especially related to Wyoming, and specifically in Natrona County, the city like Carter had mentioned. So it was great to be there for that and hear those things. One of the takeaways for me is that how do we continue to grow our economy within the state of Wyoming? How do we diversify it? I think that's going to be the key. Always push back when we have new ideas and new things that we need to be able to do to bring in economic diversity. So hopefully, we will hear those warnings and the idea that we need to do things to diversify our economy. It's going to be critical, especially when our children, mine I can speak to, are leaving to go to other economies and other cities. That should be a wake-up call to the state of Wyoming, where you're going to get the gray hair leading the charge, and we're going to be done here soon. So we need those young people. Finally, I'll be at the Celtic Festival at 10 a.m. on July 19th. I think I'm reading a proclamation and welcoming everybody to the opening ceremonies for that. So really looking forward to it. Hopefully I'll see if you're there, if you can make it. That'd be great. And that's, oh, sorry, Celtic. I'm a huge Boston Celtics fan. And so for 35 years, I've been saying Celtics. Thanks, Vice Mayor. A notice of an executive session to take place at this date and during this meeting was given. We have matters to discuss regarding personnel, potential litigation, and attorney-client privilege. The Chair to entertain a motion to adjourn to an executive session at the conclusion of that executive session to reconvene this regular meeting solely for the purposes of adjournment of this regular meeting. Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Counselor Haskins. There are a majority of Counselors present, and a motion to adjourn to an executive session has been moved and seconded. This motion requires a two-thirds majority of the council present. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all Counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
A greater than two-thirds majority of the council present voted in favor of the motion. We are hereby adjourned to an executive session. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. Take care.